I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Prayer today is about strength. Our Father, sometimes the cares of the day seem to multiply while the blessings fade so quickly. Our bodies grow tired and our minds even more tired. Jesus, help us. Give us strength you promised in your word. Give us the power to take the next step. Give us your grace, for we know that in our weaknesses your strength is revealed. May we receive it today. Amen.
Amen.
Jerry, you want to start us out?
Okay. The financials that I approved on July 20th included, among other items, cash transfers, were transfers from the general fund to community development for their third quarter 2022 operational funding commitment and their second quarter 2022 payroll funding reimbursement from the general fund to core technologies for a portion of their 2022 funding and from general fund to the board of DD for gas bill proceeds from April through June of 2022. Encumbrances included a contract PO from the commissioner's office to Myers, Roman, Freiburg and Lewis for legal representation outside council services and purchase order from water resources to Buckhead Tower Sales Company Incorporated for new generator for the Bellwood Lift Station. Vouchers included $65,102.75 from the commissioners to Ohio State University for the county's third quarter 2022 program support payment, $365,548.20 from the engineer's office to Chagrin Valley Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Jug Street Sections F through G, and $59,363.10 from Water Resources to the Cleveland Division of Water for Minister and Leader of Purchase Water Services.
Thank you, Jerry. Item number two, the commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of May 17, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of May 24, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Aye.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes. Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of June 7, 2022.
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Okay. And then on July 22 and July 25, I approve for the Department of Development, Community and Economic, the promotion of Ellen Malkemecki, the position of full-time program coordinator at the rate of $20.98 per hour, be effective July 23, 2022, for the highly bid probationary period. For job and family services, I acknowledge the following new hire appointment. As the Director of Job and Family Services complied with the Board of Commissioner's recruitment hiring procedures for Michael Chicorello, Social Services, fourth or two, which was a placement effective July 6. Kennedy Rundini, part-time seasonal social services student intern, effective June 30. Alex Koppel, part-time slash seasonal social services student intern, effective June 29. And Kyla McCain, eligibility referral specialist two, which was a replacement position, effective June 27. And for the commissioner's office, I approved and executed the letter of legal representation outside council with Myers, Roman, Freiburg and Lewis for the year 2022 in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Thank you, Jerry. Item number six.
Item number six is a contract maintenance form to increase the contract with NV5 for the post-occupancy change management. So as we're dealing with issues of when people are moving in, options will change. So add into their contract to an amount of $74,686. That would be if they used everything within their, which is higher than what they will actually use.
Okay. All right. I'll make their motion.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes. Tony Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. Item number seven, on the agenda this morning, the county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute order number two, increasing the contract with Marucci and Gaffney and Brunford Road Bridge Replacement Project to the amount of $15,901.60.
Okay. And what was that for? Was it material to her?
In the excavation for the foundation of the bridge, the bedrock was more friable, more loose than was expected, so they had to overexcavate and downwind the foundation of that bridge.
Gotcha. Okay. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
I have, I'm asking you guys to look at if you want, just kind of explain to the next dozen or so. One for you, if you like it.
Thank you.
So, in the past, many, many years ago, we used to do the full annual presentation. We kind of got away from that. We presented a couple of projects at a time. And then inevitably, a project would fall through the cracks and then we'd find, you know, we were working on a project and not have the resolution. So we kind of moved to collect them all. These projects, we present all of the projects that we'll do in 2023 and a few that may end up in 2024, maybe go on engineering and design processes throughout the next 12 or 16 months. So.
Is there a possibility that they wouldn't happen even if we didn't make resolution now?
There is close to a zero percent chance that we would not perform the work. These are all part of our five-year plan and based on the current inflationary cycle that we're in, some of these may have to be delayed until a future program year, but they definitely will happen.
Okay.
All 100% of these projects are intended to be moved forward with at the earliest opportunity that we can do it fiscally.
Gotcha. Okay.
Would you like me to run through them individually or a couple at a time? There's about 12 or 15 of them all together. I don't know what's in between. Do you want?
Take three or four at a time.
Okay. I'll at least get the first two on page one there. Item number eight, the county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-129 to approve the Robinson Road Bridge Structure VR 0076-0188, the replacement of that bridge in Chertan Township. That project has received federal funding, so fiscally that one will not impact our funding, but it's a fairly significant bridge replacement there on Robinson Road.
Hey Shane, real quick, just before we start digging into this, do you have a number, what the budget is for all the projects for 2023?
I don't yet.
Yeah.
At this stage, we have our preliminary numbers and I did not bring those numbers with me.
Okay.
Based on what we've seen in the last 12 months, our forecasting has been adjusted.
Mm-hmm.
I hate to try to put on record what I think it's going to be next year. Could be better.
I mean, you know what your, I mean, that's more the estimates, but you know roughly what your budget for the major projects for each year?
Do you ever take about $5 million?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And then depending on how these individual projects are either locally funded, state or federal grant, and then, you know, what the prices are actually exiting, will predict how far we get through this list and which ones will be pushed forward into 2024.
Okay.
Item number nine, as our annual pavement striping, we do approximately one-third of the county roads every year, so they're all done on a three-year cycle. That is resolution 22-130, various roads, various sections of county roads, the application of paving markings for the year 2023. Stop there.
Want to do those together?
Okay, I'll make a motion on, agenda item number eight and nine.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Okay. I think we'll do three at a time here. The county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-131 to improve Claired and Claire Road, County Highway 3, Sections D and E. That is 222, six miles from Taylor Wells to make the road in Burton and Chetan, Chertan Townships. Item 11, county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-132 to improve Old State Road, County Highway 6, Section A in Hartman Township. That's 0.43 miles from the Trumbull County Line, State Route 88. And item 12, county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-133 to improve Fairmount Road, County Highway 16, Sections A and B in Russell Township, 2.23 miles from Honey Valley Village Court Line to 306.
That's the bridge in Culver?
There is a bridge in that section and we will execute the bridge replacement prior to the resurfacing of those. So it's both.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that was 10, 11, and 12?
Okay. I will make a motion on items 10, 11, and 12.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Item 13, the engineer's office requesting board approve and execute resolution 22-134 to improve Farmington Road, County Highway 18, Sections A through C in Hartman Township. That's 2.68 miles of road from 422 to the Trumbull County Line. And we've already presented a bridge replacement on that section of road and that has been bid out and awarded, so that will happen this year. The resurfacing project will happen next year.
Agreed.
Item 14, engineer's office requesting board approve and execute resolution 22-135 to improve Breakman Road, County Highway 22, Section A and M in Township, 2.36 miles from State Route 168 to the Lit County Line. And item 15, county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-136 to improve Mumford Road, County Highway 24, Sections A through D in Troy. That's 2.03 miles from the Portage County Line to 422.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion on 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll close out the last four here. Item 16, the engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-137 to improve Messenger Road, County Highway 31, Section A in Auburn Township, 1.71 miles from Washington Street to Stafford. Item 17, county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-138 to improve Franklin Street, County Highway 35, Sections B and C in Bainbridge Township. This runs 1.96 miles from Chagrin River Road to the Chagrin Falls Village Line. Item 18, the county engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-139 to improve Clay Street, County Highway 37, Sections K and L in Thompson Township. The project is 2.72 miles from State Route 168 to Thompson Road. And item 19, county engineer's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution 22-140 to improve Washington Street, Section, County Highway 606, Section C through E in Auburn and Bainbridge Township. That's three and a half miles running from 306 to Bainbridge Road.
I'll make a motion on 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Thank you. Final item for me today, item 20, the engineer's office requesting the board approve and execute the agreement between Hammond Township and Chicago County for the non-urban construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, improvement, repair, and maintenance, pursuant to higher revised clause in Section 5535.08 for the replacement of the culvert, CD-0735-00.0005, situated in the right-of-way Chertan Manger Road as part of the improvement to Holliday Drive in Hammond Township in the amount of $43,090.29. This is the final approval for that MOU agreement to pay for that culvert replacement last year.
Okay, very good. So moved.
Second. Is there any OPWC money in this?
In that one?
In last one?
That was a local culvert project.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Shane. Appreciate it.
Morning, Jan.
Hi. Item 21, let's see, the Department of Development, Community and Economic is requesting the board reject all proposals that were submitted for a missaged gas bill project, CBDG 2021, pursuant to ORC 153.12, as all proposals were received in excess of the allowable 10% above the estimate.
All right. Will you be going back out then?
Yes. Next week, I'll be back here studying.
Who did the estimate for you?
That would have been our consultant, MDS.
Okay. It'd be interesting. I don't know. Is it possible to have our engineer's office give an estimate on that?
Yeah, I would think that in the future, we're going to need to tap into that resource a little bit more. They've been helping us kind of streamline some of those things at this point.
Yeah. I don't know if we're allowed across, you know, funds or anything like that, but are they able to give advice on that or?
It's challenging doing that kind of work outside of the right-of-way.
Yeah.
If it's not related to the roadway infrastructure.
Okay.
Maybe.
Okay. Fair enough. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
So, item 22, the Department of Development, Community and Economic is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Building Demolition and Site Revitalization Program Agreement for the period of January 1, 2022 through May 1, 2023, in the amount of $500,000.
And I can speak to this a little bit more. This actually started, this is money that the state issued out to all counties from about, almost about a year ago now, I think.
Yes.
Because it started back when Marty was here. We were working on it in 2008. So it's money that's coming from the state and we're just basically running the program for them. At the time, we did send out to all the townships and different areas that this money was coming in, if anybody had any projects. We did get three requests to be part of that down the road. One was from Chester Township to demolish, I think it was a garage that they had.
Yeah, it's a small house. Yeah.
So is this one of the townships have to join in, you know, on a dilapidated piece of property or is this more like about building projects for economic development?
It was more of dilapidating, it was more of eliminating old areas, but also for economic development.
Okay.
So the other one that requested, but I don't think we're even providing the funds because they already did the demolition, was actually West G School for the Newbury building that they demoed. And then the third one who made the request was somebody who was working with regards to the Jagga Lake properties.
It sounds similar to like five or six years ago when Ohio had a Ohio Moving Forward Program.
Okay.
And I think Bainbridge Township took the lead on it. They were the authorized agent.
Yeah.
And then the townships that wanted houses demolished had to go through the authorized agent.
So of course, Jagga County obviously is still the entity and that's what Jerry applied for, letter part of last year. So it's now just coming to be, well, we need to sign the agreement.
Is it a reimbursement program?
What's that?
Reimbursement program where the township will pay $10,000 or $12,000 to knock down the house and then prove that all the things are required and then they get reimbursed?
Right. But it was on a first-cup-for-sur faces? Each county in the state got a half a million dollars.
There will actually be sub-granties. Okay. So when it comes to it, so they won't do the work first and then get reimbursed. They're getting the money to do, to pay the contractors.
So the township's gonna apply for it as well?
Yes, and they did.
Yeah. Like, for example, I think there was a couple in Newbury last year or two years ago where, you know, it's a long drawn-out process, so they're trying to go in and, you know, knock you down or whatever.
Right.
But, you know, all while the township's showing out money to front this thing and pay for it, right? Is that, and that's what this is?
This is, they cover those costs as well as the demolition costs.
That entices the township to get the paperwork in as fast as possible so they get reimbursed as fast as possible.
Yeah.
So, because it.
So the application was at the end of February, so of course, estimates, application, you know, all of that, they were allowed to submit or so.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second.
Did I guide on here?
I did not.
No?
I second Tim.
I must be thinking of something else.
Thanks. Commissioner Lennon?
Would you like to say?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Thanks.
You're back. You're back. Here we go, Chris.
Thank you.
Hey, now. I'm working.
He's apparently speedy today.
Thank you.
Still appreciate it. Thank you.
He's got a list of things to do.
Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Turpeter.
Sir.
Water Resources has a few items today. The first one requesting the board accept the retirement designation of Dave Osborne, our operations manager, position 2311, be effective October 3, 22.
Oh, he's been, how long's he been with the?
35 years.
35, huh?
He started with 17, 18.
Yeah. He's been a great, great employee for the county.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Next item, we have a requesting for grant permission to advertise for the position of operations manager, position 2311, and the position will be posted until killed.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Number 25, to the great delight of Terry Morgan, Department is requesting the board approve the unappointment of Gerard Morgan, a sanitary engineer, position 2302, to be effective August 7, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Are you going to present him with a cake or anything?
August 7.
No? Okay.
August 7 or something. I don't know.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
And the last item we have, we're requesting the board approve the appointment of Nick Gores to the position of full-time sanitary engineer, position 2302, at the rate of 46.58 per hour, which is wage rate 17 step forward, to be effective August 7, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Lennon?
Yes.
Commissioner DeWorack?
Yes.
Good. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Do y'all need to sign anything before we go? Let's start. Have you ordered today you two things?
Good morning, Kathy.
Oh, no, that's right. Good memory.
Good morning. Jimmy, you told me to come back last time.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Sooner than one year.
Yep.
I'm here.
Yep.
I have good things to tell you.
We found it.
Yeah, I'm a building, I'm a floor after another.
Good.
Pull through back.
Yeah.
That's okay. When I was here in Maine, I had, I believe I told you guys that I had 155 approximately members. Well, I, after I left here, I was on high because you were so sweet, Tim. Jimmy had to leave, but that's okay. And I went back and I was talking to our president and I said, you know, the fair's coming up. Wouldn't it be cool if I could get to 200 members by August for a fair, 200 and further 200? Well, I'm here to tell you that I achieved and succeeded and exceeded that goal.
Great.
I met 207 members.
Wow.
And I hit areas that my predecessors never went to, like, nobody realized that Chesterland is part of Jagga County. And the people in Chesterland. So I got quite a few from Chesterland. Auburn was totally low-hanging fruit and I took advantage of picking it all. Everybody at Auburn Corners, except Auburn Inn is a member. All the new businesses, the Bum and Beaver Brewery is coming a week from Friday. They just joined us and Creighton has started a fire there and it's just exploding in Auburn Corners with what the growth is here. Wow. So Auburn and I hit, and I hit, and I'm working in Bainbridge now, but I'm up to 207 and I'm, I'm pretty darn proud of that.
Yeah, I think you're on to something. You know, I think historically, you know, a lot of the members were from the, from the eastern side of the county, I think, right? In the past and, you know, there's a lot still here on the west side and a lot of new businesses have popped up since, so you're, I think you're on to that, for sure.
And people seem to be liking my newsletter and our social media group has been my great job.
Where can they find you on social media?
Visit Jagga County, hashtag visit Jagga County, and on Instagram, it's @Jagg County.
Okay.
Visit Jagga County. Yeah, please like us, share us.
Good.
Whatever. We are doing a passport for the restaurants in Jagga County. And I'm, I'm pretty, I think we're around 30 restaurants and we're going to, it's going to be an actual little passport with each restaurant and their name and how, you know, whatever, phone number, how they've been in touch with them. And we're going to start handing those out at the fair.
Good.
But I can't work the fair this year because it's the 200th anniversary and I have 207 members.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Travis.
Nice try, Kathy. It's not happening. You're not bailing on me.
I'd like to get some chuckle.
You gotta be going, man.
Like, no, I'll be there, six days.
Good.
Only the hours down. But, so we're doing that and we're going to give the people that take the passports a couple of months, probably two and a half months to go to these restaurants. The restaurants don't have to give them anything. The only thing they're giving us is a $25 gift card so that we can, as we go along, whoever sends the first passport in gets $100 in gift cards.
Okay.
And then the winner will get the bulk of them.
Nice.
And we're also going to be doing for the fair, a magnet. And I want to use the Jagga County flag as the base for the magnet. Now, you guys don't have to pay for this unless you want to, but I'm going to order a thousand of them and somewhere on there, it'll have our little logo, but I think it'll look cute. Once, once we get it all designed, 1010, company 1010 is going to be doing that.
Good.
And, let's see. One more thing. If you had family or friends that were coming to Jagga County and knew nothing about Jagga County, where's the one place that you would send them? Jerry, I'm going to start with you.
Probably send them to one of the parks.
Okay. There's three parks, 26 of them. You think that was a good answer? No, that was a good answer. The park district will love it.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah, that's good. I don't know. I don't know. Send them to Jim's house.
She started with me.
Yeah.
Well, if you start at my house, across the street from where I live, is Burton Township's passive park. It's about 130 acres where people can walk wherever they want to. And, but really, my wife and I really enjoy the bike paths from Swine Creek all the way to Lake County, which we've traveled. We try to get onto bike trails at least two or three times a week.
Okay. I was just curious, whether you would send somebody.
And of course.
Would you happen to have them call Kathy at Destination Jaga to help them with their, their activity? Good answer. I'm all on that answer. And that's all that I have to talk about today.
Thank you so much.
The county engineer's office, can I do a, oh, let's see, what was that?
Resolution number?
A resolution number, um, twenty-two dash one forty-one.
Sure.
For your, for, yeah, my drive. And I don't need to bust this tour either.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're good.
Oh, that's funny.
But I, I think at this time, I want to compliment you in all the hard work and the new programs that you've implemented. Uh, and people are, you know, getting out of COVID and they want to really respect and reflect about where they're from. Jaga County is a great place to live, work, and play. And, uh, you've really demonstrated that you're a great ambassador for Jaga County and my hat's off to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm meeting people that are actually coming to me now because they're hearing about our map and all the good things and it, that makes my life a lot easier and I don't have to go pound the pavement.
Well, you know, build it and they will come.
That's right.
And that's what's happening right now.
And I'm building it and they're coming.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any extra money?
Oh, see, last time she said, I'm not coming for money, so today she didn't tell me that and so now she's asking.
I just, I just thought, you know.
That's funny.
I'm here for you, should be able to find it.
I do have a question.
But I'm, I'm one of the newest members of the.
I heard, you wanted to be number?
Two hundred.
That's right, I heard. You wanted to be number two hundred, so it was exciting for you.
Well, Kathy had a goal and I says, if you get up to one ninety-nine, give me a call. So she called me, she says, get your checkbook out. So, so I did. And so I'm glad it's over two hundred.
Right.
Yes.
You still have a month or so, you could get like two thirty, two forty.
I've been ready to print that map. And when, when I first, last February, told my board I wanted to get forty members by February of 2023, well, that, that number's gone. My next goal is two twenty-five.
Oh, I think I did it.
It just, somebody had to go out. Nobody was going, going out and I did find out that the, the largest number the Destination Jaga ever had in membership was when Linda Nemeth is the executive director and it was one ninety-seven, so I beat Linda Nemeth.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Hands down, I did it.
Good.
Wow, good job.
Great, Kathy.
Anything else, Jerry?
I don't have anything. It's going to be really.
County clerk, did they have anything?
Because this is a special meeting.
No, we can't discuss anything else that's not on the agenda today, so.
You've got, um, public comment? You've got, um, Vicki, do you, do you have something first or?
Sure, I would, I would appreciate that. Do you want me to go up there or?
Oh, you can, wherever you're comfortable, if you want to say that, you can.
Um, we, we just had some discussions, the other agency directors and I have the mental health, um, the behavioral health system and we're concerned because the levy is not going to go forward. And I just wanted to represent our side, there is a lack of need, that there is a significant need for behavioral health services and we're all struggling to make ends meet. So it's not about not needing, uh, the funds. I think there are other things at play. I understand the, the reasoning behind not moving forward with it. But, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that then that's going to impact the agencies that provide those services and our ability to serve the clients.
Kim, you have anything?
You might want to ask them first.
Okay.
Bring up the rear.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Michelle Burke from Catholic Charities. Um, so the, the thing that I would want to add is just that we are seeing a complexity of issues that we've never seen before. And we, uh, it's unprecedented, so we don't know what's coming, but there's things coming that need to be addressed and we need to have the money to be able to address that. Um, we have staffing issues, there's a shortage of contractors and social workers, which then means we have to offer a higher salary, but our insurance rates aren't going to change anytime soon. So unlike other businesses, we can't charge more to pay for the additional people or the additional salaries, um, so maybe we didn't represent that as well as we could have at the board meetings to, to really, um, express our needs there, but also I don't think that we were really prepared for what this was going to look like.
Yeah, did, um, are, so are you concerned about the, the, uh, reduction in collection? Is that, I mean, they, they cut their collection about, I think, close to eight hundred thousand dollars as well?
I, I would say we didn't know that there were additional monies and it's been pretty clearly communicated that there were not additional monies to ask for. I know in my hearing with the board, I was very clear that we couldn't afford the salaries that were coming and, um, didn't, didn't know at that time that I could have been asking for a lot more. So I, I do plan to go back to the board and say.
Yeah.
I, uh, we're not going to be able to make ends meet and so I'm going to ask for additional funding to supplement that now that I know there are funds there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, they do have, uh, as of right now, and I, you know, if there's, I don't think it's been officially designated to what line items it's being put in. I've heard things about housing and some other things, but, um, you know, there's close to, I think, a little over four million dollars in their, in their carryover right now, so, you know, if you're making those, uh, requests from the board, um, you know, I don't know if any of that is officially, um, been accounted for yet, so, or allocated to anything in particular.
And I don't disagree that there's a huge need for housing, so I don't think that, that should be set aside. On the other hand, um, when I looked at my numbers today, we're going to lose money this fiscal year and I don't know how we're going to make it through the next fiscal year, so I, I felt like I talked about that in a meeting, but I need to go back now.
What's your, what's, is it because of salaries?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
It's, it's, I'm saying for all of us, it's salaries. Our, our field has been way underpaid for a long time.
Yeah.
We don't make what even a teacher makes or, and definitely not anything in nursing where we used to be kind of comparable to them. So it has brought them up to something that's almost a living wage.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't have, like, uh, you well, you said, we can't get other, the insurance companies or Medicaid to up, like, we can't just charge more, we won't pay it, it doesn't matter what we charge. So we're kind of in a bind.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm a little bit different than all three of these ladies because my organization doesn't, we're not clinical, so we don't.
Charge the?
We don't, yeah, we, our, our service is our part to the community.
And what, who?
I'm NAMI, I'm sorry.
Oh, NAMI, okay.
My name's Kim Carter.
Okay.
I'm the executive director of NAMI Jaga.
Gotcha, okay.
So what we provide is something that my colleagues here don't, so they refer to us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are, we are the people, our phone is ringing off the hook and I agree with Michelle, um, what we're hearing, um, we're paddling as fast as we can paddle. We cannot paddle any faster than we're paddling. Um, and the priorities are difficult to, um, order because there's so many top priorities of helping people. And we're trying to be strategic in, um, our services, um, and what we offer. And my focus is on prevention as much as possible. Because I, um, you know, these guys are handling things after the fact.
Right, right.
Um, I'm trying to get out in front of it.
What, how much of the makeup for mental health is, uh, the rev, is your revenue? Is it a hundred percent or?
No.
Where do you get other revenue sources?
And that, um, I, I'm newer, not completely new, but about a year and a half here from a different location. And, um, one of my focuses and my board's focus has been, since I came, to reduce our dependency from that board because of the volatility that we see.
Mm-hmm. And what, are you lacking in funding from it or are they stopping funding? They cut your funding?
Yes.
Okay. How much, how much were you receiving from, uh, mental health before?
So mine was cut by forty thousand than last year.
And what was it?
One twenty-one, three sixty-eight. Now it's eighty thousand, three hundred.
And what was the, um, the reasoning for that?
So the answer's a little complicated, but I'll try to be as brief as I can. Um, NAMI has signature programming, uh, that comes from national, so I'm part of a national organization, if you don't know about NAMI. We're just a local representative and a local affiliate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are constraints with the NAMI signature programs that made it, um, difficult and in some cases impossible for me to deliver those services to the county because of training and certification that's required by NAMI to offer those. So we operate with a lot of volunteers. Those volunteers have to be trained and certified by NAMI. Because of the pandemic, a lot of that came to a screeching halt.
Mm-hmm.
So we got demand, people screaming for our services, needing us. I can't get facilitators trained and certified to deliver those services and therefore, I'm unable to bill the big board, I call it the big board, okay? So that's because of some history with my organization and the board before I came. We worry fee ba, I'm sorry, we worry grant-based model prior to becoming, but there was some issues. And from the board's perspective, my business hat, if I have my business hat on, I understand why they made the change to make us fee-based.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
They made us look like these guys, I'm an orange.
So are they paying you?
They wanted me to be an apple.
I see what you're saying. So are they paying you after, from case to case? You're, you're submitting them or?
So we get paid on the services that we deliver. Our services are free to the community. So if I deliver a support group, I build a big board group, doing that support group.
But they're saying they'll only bill up to X amount now versus what they?
So I, what I did, because I was dependent upon those NAMI signature programs and I had no control over the constraints, I created new programs this fiscal year that I took before them, things that I could control here, that I didn't need NAMI signature's approval to do, to deliver, because my goal was to deliver services. I took a look, what can we do? These is, these are the services we can do and I can bill. Three of the four new programs that I created, they didn't pick up under the RFP, they didn't fund them at all, they only picked up one to fund. So I have to find funding somehow for the other three programs. So I've been told that there's other buckets of money at the board that I can tap into. I hope that's true.
Yeah.
But because of the volatility.
Yeah, well, the volatility is separate from the, I mean, listen, the accountability is, I think, what maybe you're, um, you're running into eventually, or, you know, finally. The, the, the fact is, none of the services been, um, cut or we're not, we're not missing anything, they have the money. So they have the money to provide these type of services.
And so I'm going to be like Vicki.
Yeah.
Because the money they gave me, I'm going to go through it in about five months and I'm going to need more.
Yeah.
And so I would like, in a perfect world, for all of us to have a county mental health board that actually, like, we feel supported by them. Because then I could feel comfortable, I could feel free to, um, believe that they're going to be there to support me. But because of what we've seen, month after month, I feel like I need to go out and diversify my funding somehow.
Well, that's, I mean, this, this is the source, all I can tell you is, this is the source where you should be going for your money. And, you know, this is the first that I've heard that, um, they reduced, it sounds like your budget, I don't know if there's a reason for it, you said they're, from their side of it, you said there's a good reason.
I've heard the rationale.
Yeah.
I've heard the rationale for why the programs weren't approved.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, I sought out counsel from another county mental health board, uh, CEO, just to say, hey, if these programs came before you.
You mean a different county, yeah.
From a different county.
Yeah.
And, um, I was told by that county mental health board that if those same programs had been proposed to them, um, all but one would have been approved by them, but only the one that wouldn't, it was only because those services were already being offered elsewhere, so they wouldn't have paid me to do those duplicate, okay? So, um, I'm still learning, the system and the process and the levy and the, all of it, I'm still learning it all, but once I learn it.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, I'm Angela, I'm the CEO of Women Safe.
Yeah.
Um, I come at it with a little bit of a different angle and then I only receive about forty-five thousand dollars from the board and I fight hard for that forty-five thousand dollars. And the reason why I fight hard actually goes beyond the money itself, it's because of this system of care that I rely on to help provide the wraparound services. I am an expert in domestic violence, that's what I do. I know Mission Creek, we provide mental health and wraparound services. I'm going to refer to all of my partner agencies to provide some of those intensive needs. I call Ravenwood on a regular basis and I have somebody that has a psychiatric emergency that we need help on. I'm worried about the system of care, quite frankly, and I, I use it in a loose term, we're the peanut gallery, we are the experts and we are not asked for our expertise to be present at the table. We have people making decisions on our mental health system that are not qualified to provide that, that expertise, so-called expertise. We need to be, our voices need to be heard and they're not. We are unfortunately the victims in all of this. And I was, where I was held up was quite frankly, the ORC. I wasn't quite sure that our board of mental health and I emailed you, Commissioner DeWorick, I wasn't quite sure that ORC 5705 even allowed people, uh, at the board or at this commissioner level to reduce levy amounts to make those types of changes as they were already.
That came from the budget commission.
So.
Right, it was a recommendation, but, you know, the board, I believe, made that decision at the, at the recommendation of the budget commission.
You will see our names.
And they do that with all the different levies across the county.
And while I value that and while I live and also work in this county, I value that, I have seen just so much wasted time that for forty-five thousand dollars, quite frankly, I've spent that in blood, sweat, and tears trying to advocate for the money to still come into this system.
Right, right.
So.
Did they reduce your budget?
I go every year for an ask of an increase and every year, it's taken me probably the past five years, I used to hover right around thirty thousand.
Yeah.
I'm up at about forty-five thousand now and that's happened over the past five years.
So what did the prior director, what was his reason for that?
I, I don't know that it was a direct, I think it was just.
I mean, he's, he's the one advocating and communicating with you, I mean, that's the director's role, I believe, is.
I, I, I don't know. I couldn't specifically say that it was necessarily just gym-driven.
Okay.
I, I really don't, I don't think that's a fair assumption for me to make. Um, I think what we've been done is, is kind of bogged down in the, what keeps the peace? Okay, a little bit here, a little bit more, okay? Because then we can also say that you still got an increase. I didn't get an increase to serve the need. None of us got an increase to serve the need.
Yeah.
Because guaranteed, we all went for something more.
Yeah.
Or a new program or a new, or a new concept. The cases that have come through Women's Aid Doors over these past two years, and I keep, I, I understand the pandemic, we've all been in it, okay? Um, have been some of the worst cases I've seen in my twenty-year career. I worked in mental health for twenty-five, um, it's not my first rodeo. The concern is that we are all being taxed and when we go back to workforce, I get it, we all have that problem. But I have people that are making now fifteen bucks an hour and I'm trying to do a clap.
Yeah.
Dealing with some pretty heavy stuff.
Yeah.
And so, um, I understand their need to leave, I understand the shelf life of case management, I get it, I've done it, I, I used to do death notifications for a living, okay? My, this is not my first rodeo, the taxing amount of having this stress in addition to just trying to provide the work is exhausting.
So let me ask you, have you, all of you made, uh, budget requests already and, and what's the answer?
We get grilled, we are grilled.
Okay, I mean, are you getting the, the funding or not?
If you want to say that I've received an increase, I received an increase. Did I receive what I asked for? No.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, what did you ask for?
I asked for fifty-two.
Fifty-two, and they, they gave you forty-five?
I, it don't call me, but I believe it was around forty-five.
So this, this is not unique to what you're doing, I mean, although, you know, I, I agree with what Vicki said as far as the, uh, historically, these salaries have always been low and now I think what you've seen with COVID and now it's, it's, and we're dealing with it here in the county too, is all of a sudden everything's rocketed and then, and then throw inflation in there all of a sudden and it's, it kind of wipes out those raises. You know, the county didn't give out raises in, I think it was, what, twenty-twenty or was it twenty-nineteen? Was it twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, so, and then, um, and we held off because of the uncertainty, but, so we gave out five percent increases this year. Well, I mean, with inflation, it's like, we're still going back, you know? So, um, again, that's not unique to any of us or any, anyone in particular. But I would say, um, and when was the last time you were in the, for the budget request? When did, when did those happen? Is it?
They just went live July.
Yeah, just in May, yeah, yeah.
So you all come in at the same time and do this or?
We submit in March.
Yeah.
We submit in March, we submit in March, and then there's a review process that goes through April and May, and then you pray that your application gets presented the way it was presented to the group for an award come July one.
So do you, do you go in yourself and present to the board?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah, I mean, all, you know, there's a couple of different conversations going on. I think Vicki was asking about the levy, which, you know, you know, Commissioner DeBorak and I don't agree on that. I believe that we should go ahead with that, but I understand the thinking of it too, because the fact is, the, the carryover is, you know, there's plenty of money there, and with the recommendation of the budget commission reducing that, that inside millage, I mean, I understand it, but it is a renewal. It's coming, it's a year early, so there's still an opportunity to go out. I, I don't believe that you're gonna, there'll be any type of lack of services there, just from the amount of the carryover. Now, you know, if they're denying your requests, or reducing your budgets, that's one thing. If they're continuing to, you know, fund the budgets the same as they always have, you know, that's, that's another conversation. So, you know, I don't know, it's, it sounds like there's a couple of different situations for each one of you going on here, but.
If I can help with the levy though, and I apologize for cutting you off, Mr. DeBorak, what is the reasoning, just so that I have some clarification as to kind of why you're not in favor of going for the levy? How's the call?
The budget commission really opened up a lot of conversations about the Board of Mental Health. They, with the Board, the budget commission and the financial people at the Board of Mental Health, they presented two different times here. And they both agreed that they have too much money. So that's why they cut the levy in half from point five mil to point two-five. And then I heard rumor that the three or four employees are gonna get a five thousand dollar bonus, and I don't begrudge anybody of getting extra, extra money, or whatever. Maybe they've been through the mill, or not appreciated through their wages the last four years or so. But what, you guys come in, you guys are actually the boots on the ground to help the people. And it's amazing that the people in Jogga County vote for the Board of Mental Health levies to provide services for our residents. And you guys request X number of dollars for your different programs to help our residents, and you're not getting it. You're not getting it, and it boggles my mind that there's four, over four million dollars in the carryover, which is six months in reserve, and generally speaking, across the state of Ohio, you should have three months in reserves. So you, you've brought this to light that you guys are asking for the services, money for your, and you're not getting it. So the board, to me, is like saving money, or hoarding the money, and me as commissioner has, has not received anything in writing about their plan for this money. We hear hearsays about housing and this and that, but nothing, they don't have a direct plan. And when you present to the budget commission, it's like, what is your plan? And I think they just started putting some money in account for other things. So you guys are getting beat up during your presentations, and, you know, beat down for prices. You, you know, basically, I've talked to just about every, you know, Lake Jogga Recovery, Next Step, Ravenwood, NAMI. And basically, when you guys, you know, decapsulate this, you guys ask for a certain amount for your programs to help our people, that our people pass the levies to serve the people for their needs, and they're, they're not getting it from, from your request. And when you do request X number of dollars, you're getting like two-thirds of what you're asking for, on, every time. Would you say in the last five or six years?
I'm a little different, but probably so. I would, or it off, one, one bucket is offset by another bucket. So maybe it's like increased or an increase.
Right, but just roughly speaking.
Yeah.
Two-thirds of.
They have a couple of different levies, and I'm not exactly sure which money's come out, or which to fund each one of yours.
I would love to see the levies, the actual levies. I don't know where I'd get those, but I was told that some of my programs that I requested money for could be approved under that levy. I wanna read the levy.
Yeah, just go to the Board of Elections, and you can get the language of each levy, where the money should go.
Some fun, different things.
I wanna see the proof that my programs wouldn't qualify under that levy.
Right, right.
So getting back to the levy, and where I stand on it, it's like, they have too much money, they cut the levy in half, they want the levy, the other levy to come a year early, and I told them both, two different times, come back next year, you know?
And the reason they have, or what they told us the reason is that they have so much money is because they've been receiving a lot of grants, state grants. So it's, you know, obviously offset their, their, their budget, which, you know, that's a good thing. But what they're saying to us, and I agree with, this is where I agree, is they can't count and rely on those grants continuing forever. You know, you can't build your foundation on it. So that's where I, I agree, or Commissioner and I disagree a little bit, in that, that I, you know, I, I think it's not prudent business to stop that collection at this time. And, and, you know, but it is a year early as well, so it's not like it's, you know, it potentially could still happen.
So state funding is, is very concise on how you use that.
Exactly.
And so it limits us, where the levy money frees us to do some of the thing. I just spoke to, I had supervision of my case manager this morning, she has thirteen people at risk of homelessness right now, today. And she's one person, she's one case manager. And so the, the needs that are coming, especially financially, we need unrestricted funds that allow us to do programming more freely, because that's what's gonna be needed.
When you say unrestricted funds.
Well, I mean, like.
Unrestricted, like it's, we're not.
So state funds, it's like, you can only use it for a stimulant.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Or COVID-addicted.
Unrestricted funds, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, yeah, not the same.
Yeah, yeah. So Vicki, what about your budget now, from, from mental health? I mean, that's, that's where the lion's share goes every year, correct? I mean, it's over four million dollars a year or something, like.
My contract with them is right around three million.
Three million?
Three million point one.
Okay.
It's been that for ten years, as long as I've been CEO. So it's never increased. I think that's my issue is.
For ten years?
Yeah, if you run a, if you run a business, and you're still getting this.
Yeah, but, but here, I, here's a question I have, and that, and I understand that, I think you're being financially responsible at trying to keep things within a reasonable, what Jogga County can afford, and that type of thing. But like, for example, the youth center, you know, you've come before us, you know, for the last six years, before me, and, and I think I ask every single time, is that all you need to continue? And it's the, that, that dollar's been the same amount, what the county kicks in for the last six years.
But I've not presented on that, I think once I've presented, just to update you where we were.
But it's the exact same amount.
It's been the exact same. And where we've done the change is through Job and Family Services. Craig Swenson has worked with us on his end to bring up so that we can make a difference.
Fair enough. But, you know, we say to like, you know, Family First Council, which I've said on that board, and same kind of thing, like, you know, it's been the same number. I think it's burned into my brain at, you know, forty-five thousand, or forty-six thousand dollars a year or something. And it's like, and I ask it every single time, don't I? And I mean, you, I, I say, are you sure that's all you need from us? You know, because I'm thinking in my mind, seventy to eighty percent of the money that's going to these, each one of these agencies is going to administrative costs. And I'm thinking salaries are going up, right? So how is this not going up? That's, you know, that's always been my question. So to me, that comes down to, and I can't, I can't speak for individuals in the mental health board, or who makes their decisions based on what, or what prior directors do. And I'm not really that concerned about the past, to be honest, at this point. But, you know, but from our standpoint, you know, when those requests are made, we do it on an annual basis, you know, taking all things into consideration, and what the, the, the wage scales are at the time. So that's a management-type thing. Now, I don't know specifically why you haven't asked for more money from their levy, you know?
I did ask for more money, and received it from Family First, quite a bit. That was a pretty big increase two years ago, right when Nancy left. So that, that we did change that.
Yeah.
And it is my fault that I haven't asked you for more, but I was really clearly told, we're not gonna get any more.
Not from us.
Way back then.
Not from us.
This was before you, Jim, so you're absolutely.
Because you know, I, I.
Not more recently, come forward, but that was when we first made this arrangement, and we had a twenty percent cut.
Oh, with the youth center.
Don't talk about the youth center.
Gotcha.
No, and, and I was pretty clearly told, we're not gonna increase this.
Yeah, 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 okay.
It's not a mandated.
Yeah, because we, obviously with the, you know, not to get off the subject, but, you know, discussing the, you know, potential of building a new youth center, which I'm excited to hear about. But, you know, I think that goes along with how much the county's gonna support and kick in on that too, right? Because there's gonna be some big changes there, and it's gonna be a lot, you know, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be more to operate, you know, than what we've currently been doing. But, so, you know, that's, that's a communication thing, at least from our standpoint, you know? And we can't control, again, we don't control the, the mental health board. We don't dictate to them, we don't mandate from them, or instruct them what to do, or any of that, you know? So the only thing I can say is, from my perspective, what I've always kind of asked of anybody that I've ever voted for, or nominated, or applied, is that they look at it, and you said, none of, nobody has expertise in mental health. Well, I don't think an entire board, fourteen, needs to have everybody in the same basket, coming from the same basket. There's all types of different ways to look at it, and some people, and the way I look at things is from a business standpoint. And I appreciate people, appreciate people that do look at it as business. Because I think it's, at times, you know, not to say it's not a good intent, but, you know, people get blinders on, and if there's, it, it's not, and I'm not pointing fingers at this group or anything, I'm just saying that, you know, if there's no conscious of what things cost, or trying to keep within a budget, right? And I know you all, it sounds, are very tight, very tight, yeah, yeah.
If I may speak, I'm different than my colleagues here. These folks are licensed clinicians.
Right.
I happen to possess an MBA. So what you just said, I can appreciate. Even though I run a nonprofit, I run it, it's.
It's a business.
Revenues and expenses, I'm, I'm an MBA. So I understand what you just said, okay? I get it. We need to have that fiscal responsibility. However, if you do it in the absence of understanding, or even acknowledging that mental illness exists, and you sit on a mental health board, what are you doing on that board?
Yeah.
Even if you have, even if you possess the fiscal knowledge and responsibility, what are you doing on, serving on a mental health board?
Yeah, I don't think anybody, I don't know who you're referring to, but I.
I think there are several people.
But I don't think anybody's denying that mental health exists.
They do.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got exact quotes. This lady will provide you with a recording of those quotes. People saying that there's no such thing as mental illness. There's no such thing as a correlation between depression and suicide. That children who are diagnosed with mental illnesses, that's a parenting problem. We need to get back to the parent. These are quotes that we sit and listen to month after month.
Okay.
These are coming from people who lack understanding about mental health.
Yeah, I, I, I was not aware of that, those type of comments, but, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to talk to you if I want.
I would be happy to talk to you.
And I'd like to know who said that.
I would be happy to talk to you.
Yeah, because I wanted, I, you know, that, that, that's a concern, if somebody outright.
It's a very deep concern.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, on a different topic, as far as the funding goes, and I would, you know, continue to, so you only get to submit your request one time, and that's it?
Unless it was like a special thing that comes up, and we can go back. We've been told this time emphatically that we can come back and ask for more money.
Yeah, I think that, from the standpoint of just the salaries type, that, to me, needs to be addressed, you know? And it, I mean, it has to move along with the times, you know? And I don't know what that percentage is, but, yeah, Steve, who's.
You know, it's weird being sitting here, because I'm the chair of the mental health board.
Yeah.
And it's tough to sit here without saying anything.
Yeah.
A lot of truth, a lot of deracy, what's been said. I've only been in Jogga for three weeks, more or less.
But you've been on the board for how long?
Two years.
Two years, yeah.
And I don't disagree with that, but, you know, the board's responsibility is to ask our questions.
Exactly.
I don't agree with, with what the board always comes up with, but, you know, we are accountable for public funds. As far as the notion that we have all these millions of dollars to give away, a lot of it's already been moved over for capital to address the housing crisis need. We've already done that. I signed that paperwork. I'm very aware of the salary. I mean, I spoke to Vicki personally about it, to come back, and let's readdress all this, because we can't keep fighting this fight about that anymore. But maybe you can't retain good people. Or you lose experience, and you start over all the time.
Right.
You know, as far as the board members, it consists of seven state-appointed, seven county-appointed, so there's.
I think it's six county, and nine, or eight state.
And there's differences in that, I mean, there's an inherent.
Commissioners.
I think, I think it's done with reason by the ORC.
Sixty-fourty, sixty-fourty.
Sixty-fourty.
Okay, okay.
So there's an inherent tension there, always, by design.
And that's been there for a long time.
Yeah, you know, you know.
Yeah.
Not for a long time.
Yeah.
And we're really okay with it.
We are, yeah, we're absolutely okay with that.
I will, I want to be helping people. I need to be helping people, and I wish that for any organization.
Right.
I do find it a problem when there are members of the board that didn't know there was a domestic violence center in the county. That's a little concerning. And I also.
Listen, the board members, just so you know, these are volunteers. These are people that, again, we're not picking clinicians or specialists. I mean, we put people on to all types of different boards. Normal people, like, that, or just, some people just want to participate.
Absolutely, you know, but they're making some pretty big decisions.
Understand, understand.
And I totally respect both of you for allowing us to put you on the spot. I, I know that it's, we advocate hard, because it's what we do, where we fight. We are the ones here today to say.
Or say who's gonna be affected.
And I'm sorry that we weren't able to be present sooner. I think that some of it is, you know, with regards to the levy, I hear it always being as early, early, as it, you know, and I, it's, I thought it's a big standard election cycle, and the earliest opportunity for us to actually go on, but it doesn't change the collection timeframe, is my understanding. So.
That's right, correct.
So that's kind of where, again, I appreciate, to allow me to put you on the spot, it's always been, you know, hard to do, but I think also, it's kind of taken us a lot to figure out what's going on, and, and finally showing face that, again, where I come from is, is that the entire system of care I rely on. And it's, again, I live in this county, and it's terrifying to me to think that some of these services could not be available.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you. I want to make it crystal clear, so I understand, and that everybody in this room, and that picks up these papers, understands that nothing is falling through the cracks, is it? Are we lacking service, or?
Yes.
We are? Well, you're saying.
I believe we are.
Okay. Are, are we, are we missing something that we were doing before?
I believe there are some gaps that are not funded.
Yes.
But are, are these, are these new gaps? Are these something, I mean, I'm not saying, you're saying there's more and more healthcare issue, but I mean, has there been cuts?
There are, the needs are increasing.
The needs are increasing.
But I come from a different place. I'm from a different state. So I see services that we were doing elsewhere, that we could be doing here, that would help our continuum of care.
Some newer.
And we go to prevention.
Some newer, some new stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I'm seeing the need as this county has always had, which is, you know, emergency crisis services, housing, transportation needs, right? The things that we've done needs assessments for twenty years, I'm showing this.
Well, I've heard the transportation for years, and, you know, Vicki and I have talked about it. I've talked to other directors across the county, and I've tried to get my head wrapped around, is it dozens, is it hundreds, is it thousands? And I have not got a straight answer, because we do have transportation in this county. We've got multiple different avenues for transportation in this county. So, again, you know, I think, you know, we've got all these different.
I can't stretch my legs to the head, though.
Yeah. We've got all these different agencies and 501(c)(3)'s kind of revolving around, and I hear a lot of this, you know, and it's, and, again, it's, I'm, we're open to try and address it, but we can't unless we have some type, something to go off of.
Yeah, and again, I just stand on a variety of needs assessments, in which it's been thrown out there, and then the legislature, and it's thrown out there, and that's, and what it is, it's thrown out.
It gets thrown out, that's all I hear, yeah. So, no, I, I appreciate you coming in here, and, you know, just talking to us, and you can talk to us individually, or talk to us in the board, because it's good to know and understand, you know, what, what your issues are, what your problems are. You know, I'm happy to try and help advocate for you individually, or as a group, or whatever you need. You know, I'd be happy to come to a mental health meeting, if you need me to, to, you know, kind of express what you're expressing. And I can't guarantee that you're gonna get what you're looking for, or maybe you get some, or none, or all of it, I don't know. But, you know, I'm there to try and help you, you know, so.
I think I'm just looking for as much of the directors that are present today, to have that same type of partnership with our, our board as we would have with you. And again, if you have any questions about the services we provide, our doors are open. I speak for all of us, because if there's a random question, just call me.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that that's maybe, that could help cure up a lot of this, is making decisions based on knowledge.
So, totally different subject, your parking lot. What's going on with that?
That's. Yeah, I, well, our parking lot, our building was built in two thousand and seven, and it's the back corners that are kind of falling in.
Yeah.
It's been a long-term wish list. We wanted to add actual, some additional parking spots, which is not going to be able to be granted, just due to the sheer expense of the project. But Gina has advocated for us to make that happen, and I appreciate you seeing the engine turn.
So the county, over the years, I think, you know, through this program, through economic, you know, we've tried to find, you know, things like that. And I think we've done some other projects on your property before.
Yes, you helped with our donation center as well, to help.
That's right.
The left, correct.
I didn't want to bring it up at the time, but the last motion you guys did, we'll have to bet.
Oh, good, good.
And we've also, from our board perspective.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We've also been looking to have, our board will provide additional support so that we can try to get this project done. So there has been some commitment mesh on our side of the house to make sure that the project is seen through.
Yes.
The plan is to go out to bid next week.
Yeah, fingers crossed, I guess, that we do this again.
Part of the issue was, is that we couldn't meet advertisement requirements this week, Part of the issue was, is that we couldn't meet advertisement requirements this week, because we couldn't hold the meeting yesterday. So, therefore, that was part of the issue.
Got it.
That was only a part of it, just so you know. The other part of it was coming from the prosecutor's office. So, we will, we will work on getting all of those pieces together.
I only learned the flavor of this whole thing. I was like, it's just a parking lot, but apparently a parking lot with county money is a whole new level.
Um, well, there's bid thresholds, and, and that, and sections of code require certain things, and so, we tried to go out one way, and it didn't work, and so we're-
We look forward to having a new parking lot eventually.
It will, it will happen, don't worry. It will happen.
I'll do it myself. I'll come and watch you.
But, um, yeah, so, again, thank you for coming in, and, again, I don't, I don't know if you've all met Steve officially, but, you know, I would, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting, and, you know, yeah.
If you recognize, let's hope for your Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
He's sliding down in the stair.
Steve?
Yeah, but I think he's, you know, like I said-
It's a good mindfulness practice.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Steve's been very supportive.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Like I said, three weeks at the job, I'm trying to, trying to reset the tenor, trying to keep us out of the newspapers.
Yeah.
We're talking to bad news, we're doing great things, uh, but I need time to, to change the trajectory of what's going on.
Yeah.
It's extremely time consuming for the volunteers. I had no idea how much time that I would have to put into this. Uh, and I had a conversation with Jerry about should I, shouldn't I do it, because, you know, I'm also a director, report to you guys, and, but I think it's important. Uh, you know, there's the state appointees, our experts in the field, the county, not necessarily, but, you know, county individuals for the-
We've got some excellent people out there we put on there as well.
I personally have very intimate knowledge with the mental health care system, and a few other people do. I can't contradict what was said here, but I would say you have more with money than you do with.
That's right.
So, uh, we're working, we're moving ahead.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyone can come before the board, and ask for more money. I think we all acknowledge that the salaries are just, well, they're abysmal in some respects, and we're competing with other counties. You ready to go and ask to compete with everyone else? Uh, and Vicki and I did have a conversation, it was last, last week.
Yeah, we left the board last week.
That we were going to get together, and, you know, we want to see what other counties are paying, just like I do, to work on these resources. Because there's always competition, and, you know, there's this reputation that the field is very underpaid, so, you know, you don't get people coming for jobs too, because of Java, but it's, I can promise the agencies, um, that, you know, we will be reviewing again. The discussion's already happened, um, but, you know, I, I have to be careful, because you have, you can't have discussions outside of the, right, sunshine.
Right, right, right.
So, we do things one month at a time, which adds even more time, unless we do a bunch of executive meetings, which I know people hate coming to, because they don't know how long they're going to have to suffer, but I think, uh, I think things will be improving quite a bit.
I mean, it is a big, that's a big board, you know, it's a Neilby.
Yeah, like a rowing cat.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to say under Steve's tenure, already, it's, it's much better.
Yeah, I think moving forward too, you know, with the, you know, I think there's an interim director in there, and, you know, and I believe you've made a new hire as the, what is it, the assistant director, and?
Well, Amy's, Amy State, she's very valuable over, you know, the office communication.
So, I think, I think, I think now that, um, you know, this is, um, it's like a, it's like a steamship, you know, it takes a while to get it turned around, right? And, um, I, I, I think, I think, uh, you know, going forward, things hopefully will become more positive, um, and the disagreements amongst the board members will cease, you know, you never like to hear that regardless. I understand there's, you know, strong opinions both ways, um, you know, and some of the state appointees have been board members probably for, you know, way before I was ever here, and for forever and ever, you know, some of them have been on that board forever, right? You know, so, you know, with new board members comes, but, um, you know, but again, I, I hope you'll use me as a resource, if you do have a problem with somebody, or you have a problem with something, you know, I'll help, I'll, I'll help you, if I can, I'll do the best I can. Yeah, and, uh-
But the more people I talk to about, when they present, it just seems like, and it really takes me back to April sixth, where the police officer deputy stood up and asked for, he only asked for five thousand dollars, it was a, like, like a rubber stamp situation, five thousand dollars from the state of Ohio, not from our money, he was trying to get some of our money back in the Jogga County for the DARE program, and the Amish DARE program, and he was verbally beat up. And if he, he could stand there with a uniform on, a badge on his chest, being verbally beat up, I can only imagine the sharp, uh, edges and barbs that they give you guys. I can only imagine that.
Yeah, I, I will, um, you know, I, I'd be happy to talk to you about it, and if there's something in, individual in particular, that's, you know, that, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
I think the reason I'm here today is my concerns over the future. So, if some of this money is earmarked, and then we are left with a, a more reasonable amount for the agencies, but the need continues.
Yeah.
If we don't do this levy now, are we going to, I'm fearful of us not being proactive, and then being in a-
Well, that's, that's somewhat my concern, that, that's why, and again, this is not a decision that the commissioners make, okay? We're not deciding whether to get a levy, not, it's the people in this county that are making that decision. So, I have no inclination, no problems from going ahead and moving and getting that put on the ballot tomorrow morning, if you want to do it.
So, we should be careful about unintended consequences.
Yeah.
So, by not doing it, does it send an unintended message?
That's what I'm, I'm just saying, I think, you know, that, that's my concern, that's my concern.
Yeah.
And at this time, I want to take a pause on this levy situation, for them to put up a year, you know? The money's still going to, it's still going to go on for another year, just they're going to put on at the right time.
But it's behind, and we're losing some state and federal funding to cut that.
And then, I just, I just found out about the homestead extension, probably some of that, taxes.
Yeah, and we're getting, you know, somewhat of a cut right now, you know, I think it's like a twelve percent of the time, you know, the deal on-
One of the big things is volatility in the situation. Uh, you know, we do have, you know, we talk about cash equity that the board has, and maybe it hasn't been articulated clearly in the past, about how much money is there. And there's always been the, um, plan to try to move forward on some more housing, especially on emergency, and offset sending residents to Kaihara, or, and, you know, we have a great relationship with Lake County, and we want to grow that, foster it, and, you know, it would be beneficial if we could get some more especially emergency housing. But the other thing too is, we don't know if we're going to lose these grants, with, you know, the current administration, and ARPA and all that, all of a sudden, aren't sixty, fifty percent, maybe way less than thirty percent, and then we're in a big crisis. And then, who, who does the board get the money, or provide the funding to, and who's going to get the short end of the stick?
And that's, that's my concern, with this being a renewal, this is money that's already been approved, gone for, you know, so I, I look at it a little differently. Um, I am concerned that we're not getting it on the ballot, uh, this go around, but, um, there is another bite at the apple, um, the, the next cycle, um, so.
Or even, even if there's a primary, uh, you can put it on then.
It would be a special.
I think it would have to be a special.
It would have to be a special.
Or Jerry, you can top off.
It's, um, just, I haven't kept up with it, but what's the, the deadline or the file date, did we pass us?
No, it is August tenth at four o'clock.
So, we still have time to get it in?
Yes.
Yes, I, I didn't want to bring it up here, but, um-
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking.
There's two, there's, if I remember correctly-
It's multiple steps.
There's two step shape to make.
The auditor.
The commissioner, the, the, the motion that you not passed, it was to send it to the auditor, to determine the amount of money that would be collected.
Okay.
Then you had passed the motion to put it on the agenda.
Okay, well, we're missing one commissioner, if he gets back in time, you know, maybe possibly, we could readdress it, um, you know, or, you know, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Borick, but I, I just, I think it's important that we try to get that over the, over the deadline, you know, I don't know, I don't know when he's going to-
The status expressed by the commissioner. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's quite reasonable, the questions that are asked, and, you know, where we're headed, maybe we didn't articulate it as best we can, or transmit a sense of urgency or fear that we all have, I don't think we did good, maybe did a good job, I don't know, Amy and Jim have phenomenal-
Hey Vicki, can you ask, I know we're dragging on here, but, um, I think it's good. Um, remember the county home?
Yes.
And that whole issue, and, you know, that thing was a giant liability at the time, because we did not have the right certification to be operating it, and it, it eventually turned into a mental health, uh, home, is what it was, and we just, we, we weren't set up to operate it. And I remember going to meet, I, I don't know if I was with you, I mean, we went and sat down with, um, the former director of mental health to discuss this, saying, hey, are you able to use your, um, mental health dollars to, you know, get this place accredited, or certified, or get it up to a par where we can continue to keep it open? And it was like emphatic, no, we can't use those levy dollars. Do you know if that's a fact or not?
My understanding was it wasn't, I, I didn't know you were asking him to bring it up to, to par, because I, I remember his issue being it wasn't certified by the Ohio Department, so.
And he couldn't put his money into something like that?
Yeah, he couldn't pay for somebody to be there, or to supplement the functioning, because it wasn't certified.
Okay, but, so, okay, scratch that idea, so if we were going to do some, like, emergency housing, or do, um, some new housing, we, we, possibly, we could use levy dollars to do that?
Yeah, I would think so, you could do that to-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Renovate a facility, and I mean, we, that's part of what's going on, is I think we have some capital grants that can help with some, either building or renovating a facility.
Okay, but I'm just wondering why couldn't, why we couldn't use it on the county home before, why we couldn't have used it?
Yes, yeah, I, my understanding was that he, he thought, or I thought you were asking to, let's pay your clients there, but unless it's certified. You were asking for money to actually renovate and get it certified.
Okay.
So, I, I think that was it.
Yeah.
Just letting you know, we have an ad hoc committee on housing, and we have been visiting locations, you know, we've spoken, you know, we've gone up to Lake Jogga, saw their facilities, and, you know, anything that's new construction or retrofit, we need specialty A and E from.
Yeah.
And there there have identified three.
Yeah.
Uh, so we're moving along, but, but sometimes that doesn't get seen.
What, so, I, here's an idea, that in, I, I don't know if Craig said it, or somebody threw it out there, but, you know, if we go the route of, um, you know, building a new, from the ground up, youth center, you know, close to where we're, where it exists, you know, utilizing the old youth center as some type of housing.
Yeah.
I don't know if that would be possible.
It's come up in discussion.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
You know, and it has to be done in, in, in concert with the community too, because, as was alleged here, you know, some people probably don't want new housing in the community. And, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, I just don't understand.
Yeah.
Because we're sending far too many residents outside, and it costs us a lot more money to do that.
Well, it's like the youth center, I mean, we were sending kids to Pennsylvania, and New York, you know, it's, they, Jogga County kids, it, you know, as many as we can, we should circle the wagons and keep them here in Jogga County, you know, where they're close to their family support, they're close to their school.
Agencies.
You know, the agencies, yeah, right? I mean, how do you, how do you see a kid that's in New York? You know, it's like, and I understand the rehab, that's changed, you know, over the last, you know, the whole model's changing, and probably it's always evolving, but, um, this is good, I, I like this, that we're here today, and I was just sitting here thinking, listening to Steve talk, like, you know, I, in some regards, I do feel a little bit